Basically an exception to the ordinance of them having to install.
So we're suspending enforcement?
Correct.
I know that we, can we do that? Is that okay? Temporarily?
I would probably suggest that it doesn't need to be an action item, but if it's been your, because I read the ordinance here and I think it's within your capacity, you know, to allow that. We can always come back later. I just want to make sure that it's understood that it's not a waiver of the requirement that the sidewalk exists eventually. And there's other provisions that allow us to install sidewalks as well when where they don't exist. So my view of it would be that you wouldn't take it as an action item and that we would just do it, you know, more in the way of a side agreement to make sure that, you know, the ordinance is being fulfilled to its letter, but you know, over a reasonable timeframe.
So just making a condition of moving forward?
Correct.
Does everybody get with that?
Yep.
Okay.
So does that mean we don't have to put the sidewalk in?
Yeah.
You have to put half the sidewalk.
Thank you very much. We're glad we're involved.
Mike, parking ordinance.
City administration has directed a fair modification to our parking ordinance pertaining to overnight parking. As you're aware, from November 1st to April 1st, overnight parking is prohibited unless a permit is issued by the chief of police for on-street. However, there's nothing in the ordinance restricting this in the municipal parking lots in the downtown district. Attached is ordinance 23-02, which will restrict overnight parking in our parking lots during the same timeframe. The chief of police will issue permits to residents and lodging businesses to allow parking in the municipal lots. There's technically a $25 fee for each permit issued for on-street parking permits. Excuse me. So however, to Chief Nurse, to my knowledge, the city has never levied this fee yet for on-street parking. Unless something unforeseen occurs, we would continue the same practice for the parking lots. We have given you a ordinance to look at. I did notice one thing in the ordinance was brought to my attention that there is nothing in the ordinance saying that the chief will issue a permit for the parking lots where we probably should add it just to align like we do with the on-street parking.
That'd be more for the residents that live there then, right?
Correct. And we would, yeah, we just want to have record that they're there.
And then are we still talking about the residents that live on our main street to get like a little sticker, a coin to put in the window so that when you guys go through, you know?
Right now, we just, we have this orange sheet of paper. They slide it up on their dash, so it's usually seen by the officer. We can look into getting stickers like a college parking pass type of thing. Yep.
I think I could assume you did that, then a piece of paper, right? Because then it's on your window. It's not, oh crap, I lost my paper.
The only thing I would want to have some provision for like the end.
Yeah.
So when they, so they just give them a written permit or something, or just something written that they keep, they get their...
More like the hotels do, they give you that little thing that you clip on your rearview visor, right?
You can do that too.
And just have those available for Rick to hand, or to hand out to people at the end.
And then one other addition to this ordinance. We would, as requested, we would be prohibiting parking on Main Street year round between 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM.
It gives, and our EPW guys time to get the snow off at night instead of plowing around.
Some question I do have, you know, that I would want to bring to you with this. We'll come back with the changes, but how far down Main Street do we want to go? We have parking on Main Street basically from Hudson all the way down to your Grove Street. Do we want to restrict that parking all the way on Main Street to Grove, from Hudson to Grove? Or do we only want to keep it like up to like, say, Jefferson? I mean, can we?
Yeah. Basically Jefferson to the intersection here is that Shell and all that Hudson, that's our downtown, right?
Correct.
And I think that's...
Because we do have some residents who he's in there, like near where I live, that do park on the street.
Yep.
And I don't know if we, if this is really... The way, the way, the way this first draft of the ordinance, if it was in place, it'd be all on Main Street. But my question is, is do we want to just restrict this to basically from Washington to Hudson?
Hudson Zone.
Or Jefferson to Hudson, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You could even go, you could even go to Jackson. I mean, you could even go to Jackson.
What's the DDA?
DDA, yeah, to Jefferson.
Something else in the DDA is there?
It's up to...
I don't like that. That's a couple things.
Well, I mean, that's, we're not making up another boundary. We can just say DDA.
So do you want to take this back then?
We'll fix this.
This direction?
Yeah. Well, I just was presenting this to you for the first time to look at it. There were a couple, there were a couple things I caught even after I read it and reviewed it that oh, we need to see clarification on.
All right. Good with that, everybody? Okay, the next one is the public safety cost recovery ordinance. I read this preview over. And John, I talked to Jessica before she flipped the country, but we need to take out any fire-related items because they already have a cost recovery. And Shannon's idea with that was to have one identical for all three municipalities that he covers. So you're not billing a Lowell City resident a rate, but if the crash is in Lowell Township, then you bill their rate over Gens. So Shannon's is uniform for all three municipalities, so I'd like to remove any fire or accident-related stuff from this one as to not encroach on one and confuse people.
Yeah, and I don't think you wrote our cost recovery ordinance for fire. It was an ordinance that was shared between, that I think Jessica reviewed.
Yes.
But you don't, I think, because I was, there was confusion when I talked to you guys on Friday about it. And it really dawned on me that you didn't write the ordinance, the cost recovery ordinance. You reviewed it though.
Yeah, so yeah, ordinance 2103 from a couple of years ago was the fire ordinance. And this is, was presented as more of an informational item for how you could do it as comprehensive. And it has language in there that talks about the fire agreement, but I think it does make more sense to split it. And so what will be presented will be in the chapter governing the police. And it will be limited to extending cost recovery as allowed by ordinance to police activities. Yep.
Yep, we're just having some, we're having some unique incidences whereby we really need to revisit this ordinance for police.
Right, and it's not a, you know, it's, a lot of communities have these and they make a lot of sense. They're allowed by statute and, you know, is it a promise that you're always going to, you know, get your money back in whole? No, but it certainly is a arrow in the cover that, you know, keeps the city in a good position to be able to look to do so.
And at least on the fire side of it, in our experiences, it has been relatively easy to enforce. And most of the insurance companies are actually, if you can get them a copy of the ordinance, they're pretty okay with, you know, covering costs associated with it. So it's all in the writing and I think outside of the fire wording in here, which we can remove, the rest of it, I think, is wording pretty well.
Yep, that's, that's right. And with police responses, insurance isn't going to be in the conversation all the time. Maybe sometimes, but not, not, you know, to the same degree as fire coverage. So, but yep, I'm happy to take those back and make those changes and be presented for action at one of your next meetings.
And I think to clarify, we're not looking at every situation the police occurs when we're having excessive situations and we are getting some of those.
Or overly preventable.
Overly preventable.
Right, and the language in there gives, you know, a list of sort of designators that says that this is not a situation where you call 911 or whatever because you thought you needed it. This is a situation where, you know, there's abuse and there's various metrics that you need to prove out. And that any judge or any, you know, any challenge that ever comes to the ordinance, you know, you'll want to be able to satisfy that in any given case.
And it gives the chief of police and I flexibility as to when we need to insert the cost recovery portion of it.
Correct.
We're going to actually assess the charges. It's, I don't foresee us doing this very often, but there are some instances that I know we will have to.
Right, and you're allowed to do it by statute, so it seems only right that, you know, you put something on the books. It gives you that option.
Dennis Kent, 1700 Faith Thrive. Yeah, I wrote, I read through this ordinance just kind of quickly. I don't profess to be, you know, expert on this or anything, but it seems to me it does a good job of explaining when you can charge, but maybe it doesn't clarify what you're not going to charge to, which I think, you know, the mayor, manager just addressed. But it might be helpful to have that written in there a little clearer so that people don't get reluctant to call the police and fire to get a bill for it. It's a good idea.
And we did that with the fire ones, so it'd be easy to do that. I don't want to do it as a deterrent to people who need help or need assistance. That's not the goal here. The goal is to make sure that these guys are using their time helping people.
It's more false, excessive, for lack of a better word, fossil warrants. Where we need to designate resources unneedingly when we really have other things that we should be doing.
Mike, thank you, Dan. All right, so that's enough direction on that one for John and Mike?
Yep.
Yes.
Do you think those are all good? Okay. Move on to the splash pad cost sharing.
For the past few years, the city and Lowell Township have been working towards a possibility of having a splash pad. We both contributed towards. Originally, the plan was to replace, was to place a splash pad on the property we sold the township adjacent to the riverfront park. Unfortunately, the electric easement on the property did not allow this to happen. The township then had property deeded to them from Impact Church for the splash pad. They anticipate the total project cost at approximately $450,000. The township received a DNR passport grant and private donations. There's approximately a $100,000 gap where they've asked the city to submit a grant request to the Lowell Area Community Fund along with possibly securing a portion from other options and/or general fund expenditures. Once constructed, they have requested the city to contribute to the equal amount of operational and maintenance costs. This is a joint partnership and is significantly less than if we were to do this ourselves. The city has desired a splash pad for years. While I haven't received a projection for annual operational and maintenance costs, I don't believe it will be a significant strain to the general fund and would be less than if we did this on our own. It is also in a central location between the city and township where our residents and their residents can do it. I'm recommending the Lowell City Council approve a cost sharing agreement for Lowell Township, for Lowell Township's splash pad is presented.
I'm at maintenance cost item. I'm going to be visiting here. Plymouth Charter Township has a very nice one. Wayland, the city of Wayland has a very nice one, right about the size that Jerry and I are looking at. So it would be pretty easy to get into maintenance costs, what kind of machinery to avoid. Because you can have one that's a circulated system, but then that water, right, has to be treated and chlorinated and those machines have to be, or you can dump it, let it soak back into the ground and into the water table and then dump it again. So there's still some stuff to be ironed out, but thanks to Jerry, really, we're probably a year or two ahead of where we would have been at trying to do this on our own.
I just have a question. If a pump breaks for the splash pad, they, it would be our DPW people fixing it, right?
At that point, I, no, we probably, that might be something we probably need to revisit.
Okay.
We haven't, you know, I, I, I don't see, I mean, it's not the city limits, so I would not be dedicating our staff.
Okay, okay.
But that being said, we probably do need to...
It's going to be worked out because if that's a cheaper option for both of us than bringing in a private company.
No, I shake my head only that depending on y'all, but some simple, of course, we help them out and try to save everybody, but typically for things like this, those type of pumps and stuff, pull one out, put one in. There's people out there that do that for a living and that my recommendation, we get the professionals in there to fix it, to make sure it's done right and keeps operating properly.
Is this a good time to negotiate for partial help with the library?
If you, if that is the desire of the council, you are welcome to do so.
Mike, has the final design been done and whether they're going to have it go where it goes to treatment and it's just fresh water?
Every person that I've talked to splash pad related, including Rich LaBombar, had said a closed-loop system is a nightmare, a maintenance nightmare.
Bacteria.
Yes.
That's the whole...
And you got to treat it like a city pool.
And you have to treat that water like you would a city pool and you have to maintain that.
That's why it's what it is.
Yep.
So are they going to be using city water in there?
So that's sort of my question is, we've already talked that this summer, we'll probably be doing a sprinkler van, which is outdoor water. How does this affect our water usage?
Good question. That's a good question. Maybe it's something, maybe we talk to them about a recycled water system where, you know, you can recycle, you can recycle water, like a lot of these splash pads, especially out West, that you recycle water, things like that in here. Maybe that's something that we can...
That nice blue stuff there at the mini golf course?
No, 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 not that.
It's just, I, I'm not against the splash pad whatsoever as a month of COVID, we would definitely use it. I just, it's on my mind that if we're going to be putting a sprinkler van in place, there's going to be people unhappy when there's 60 kids splashing in water for 12 hours.
That's true.
Yeah.
Could it be a dry splash pad?
We get to bring your own water.
We could break some new ground here with the virtual splash pad. They put on little goggles that they think they're getting wet.
We could do virtual reality.
With a squirt gun. Get a fan.
So there are $100,000 short right now and they want us to, and I don't have a problem with that, request a grant from the Lowell Area Community Foundation. What happens if we don't get the $100,000? Do we have to find the money in our budget?
Well, the grant isn't the only option. And there's still, so probably there's some other grant opportunities out there. This is just one that, you know, Jerry's one, he's got the passport grant and a couple of other things.
I think Jerry, can I come to you with Jerry? Jerry said, I think the worst case scenario for the city would be $25,000. That's what he's told me on the phone. Now, so this word, one time $25,000, I think we probably can find.
Yeah, I would point out, if I can interject here, the agreement as it was presented and it was done, I think by the Township's Council, does set it up that it would be, that for construction, costing expenses for construction of the project, not to exceed $50,000 in aggregate to be shared equally between the city and the township. So that substantiates the $25,000 number. I would just point out that in the packet, the definition of project is set up in Exhibit A. I haven't personally seen Exhibit A, so I just want to, and I just want to make sure that it's consistent with, that when we, you know, if it's the council of will to approve this today, that their definition of the project is consistent with what you want in terms of the system. And then ongoing maintenance costs, you know, are yet undefined because it will be kind of determined on all these things that we're discussing, but it would be shared equally. So I do see it as, you know, no big, like, it'll be equally in the interest of both to, you know, to do things that will lessen, you know, that overall cost.
I'm okay with it. They don't fit the same construction company that they fit the Lowell cards.
Ooh. That's the, that's the pipe people. We're the pump people. That's the...
And if you bring your own water, you don't even need pumps. Splash your own kids.
Oh, that's a close idea. Wearing the goggles and just sit there with a squirt gun.
Beat our ass.
I didn't think it was a sprinkler van that you just brought up now.
Sorry.
That's okay. No, I'm glad you did. That was good.
But it has to be...
I'm glad you did. Well, it's perfect.
I had to address that, so.
Glad you did. It's nice to hear. Because, I mean, how much?
Do we have any idea how big this thing is and how much water it moves per minute or per hour or how?
The gallons, the flow rate won't be determined until the final design is done.
Isn't it kind of motion activated?
You can make that, yeah, I would want that.
All that, all that.
I'm just saying, it's going to be a popular place to be.
The one I saw in Plymouth has ordered as zones, right? So you go to one downtown and you hit the thing and everything comes on everywhere. And if it's just you and your kid, you know, the one I looked at is zoned out. So if he's playing on the flowers and he pushes the button, just the flowers come on, right? So you're saving a ton of water by zoning it out.
I think Casey's does that as well.
Yeah.
Uh-oh.
Don't you ruin this for me, Terry.
I'm not. I'm just so trying to get a, so if you're using the water, is it then continuous pumps that were providing water and then that water's going in the sewer? I mean, I, so I just think what I'm hearing is I think there's a whole lot of questions that yet need to be answered before you make a approval tonight. I just, the, Leah brought up a great point. Again, is it going into the sewer and then does that start to max out our sewer? I mean, there's just a lot of questions.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it would max the sewer, but I, but I get your point. Maybe this, I, I do, I do agree, maybe we do need to kind of inquire with the township some more information as to what they, what they're looking at. I wouldn't be opposed to it. I mean, like I said, this was given to me by the city.
But I mean, this is not cutting a check.
No, but we, yeah, but this is an agreement.
Right, but it has to work out and be built and be efficient and be a better, not cutting a check and then say...
No.
It's got to be mutually beneficial.
Right, I agree.
And I don't think you have that answer.
Unlike our library. Oh, did I say that out loud twice?
Jim's keeping track.
Well, can we ask those questions to the township to come up with an approximate? Are they looking at a closed system, an open system? What they predict for a flow rate and get some more answers because I think we have more questions than we have answers right now. And then just bring it back and look into that.
Here again, I would like that seen the representative from Lowell Township.
Yes, very much so.
We ask this of our citizens when, when, when they come to court, to court, to our town. I got a couple of here tonight about the sidewalk, so I would let it as a representation from them to address these things as well too.
Yeah.
I mean, I want to see it go forward, but right now I have, I just would like some answers.
Yeah, I think the ball is rolling. I think that, you know, everybody is supportive. It's just logistics of making it happen.
I'm getting a lot of pressure from my four grandkids going to do this done, that they don't want to be in recycled water, but they're worried about the environment too.
And when does, when does the, the grant have to be submitted by?
I was going to submit for the mail-in of the, of the community fund.
Well, do we even have, okay, speaking of the grant, would they grant us money when we don't even know what kind of system we're putting in? And hey, we want money for this.
I believe, I mean, there is a plan that the state obviously, that they submitted to the state. Something on the DNR cross fund, which that would probably be a lot more, knowing dealing with state than you would think.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to asking for the money. I mean, it...
Another option, you know, if the council wants it, and I see this often with other boards, is you could, we could amend the approval to be something along the lines, you know, amend the agreement like, you know, in a form approved by, or, you know, in a form approved by council and, you know, subject to the city manager's, you know, approval or something like that. And you could essentially, you know, give him, you know, some authority to run what, you know, what you had and get a, you know, an agreement that comes out of it. So I'm not hearing that that's exactly what you guys want to do. It sounds like maybe we should come back to council, but that would be another pathway that you could set up if you wanted to continue, you know, pushing this towards a quicker timeline.
Well, as long as you're speaking, earlier you said it references a document that you haven't even seen.
Well, Jessica's, Jessica's seen it.
Oh, Jessica's worked on it.
All right, that was my only point. When he was talking about, you know, the project, I just wanted to point that out to, to the extent that that, you know, document reflects that in any way.
I mean, if we're all invested in submitting this grant, who changed the motion to approving submitting the grant request?
I think that sends you down the path that you're going to agree to everything.
But this is a cost sharing agreement for something we don't...
Right.
Know the cost of.
Yeah?
And if we, let's say in two and a half weeks, the township can put together a packet and it comes back, then it's in our, you know, first meeting in February, which would be the 6th. Mike wanted to present for the grant and when?
I was going to submit the grant application and the deadline would be in April, so.
Okay, so worst case scenario, if they, if they can't come back with it fast enough, we still have the 21st, which then gives time for Mike to do the grant. And we have...
How much time does it take you to... Write a grant?
Yeah.
Is there anything? Fill in the blanks? A hour, I think. Maybe a day.
All right.
Okay, then that's the consensus.
So table and bring it back?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, a couple of weeks ago, I received a proclamation request. Sounds like a bunch of different municipalities and the state of Michigan are proclaiming February as Community Support Month. So I'll read the proclamation and then I'll look for a motion on it here. Whereas the Lowell United Methodist Church, in partnership with other Methodist and local churches, local organizations and individuals have established the Community Support Month Project to show gratitude and appreciation to persons working to provide critical services to the west Michigan community. And whereas each week in February, Community Support Month identifies and recognizes persons serving in a specific occupational area to show community appreciation. And whereas Community Support Month has grown significantly since its inception in January of 2022, when over 100 people were blessed, over 1,000 people were blessed with expressions of gratitude ranging from gift bags, gift cards, meals, and other acts of kindness. And whereas members of the community from all different backgrounds and political views have been able to come together to show their love and appreciation for others serving the community and intend to do so again in 2023. And whereas the persons who work tirelessly on behalf of the community to be honored in 2023 are February 5th, which is the first week designated for healthcare workers, February 12th, Week 2, designated for police, fire, and EMS and first responders, February 19th, Week 3, dedicated to educators and teachers, and Week 4 of February 26th, dedicated to service workers of all kinds, waitstaff, clerks, bank workers, mechanics, and everybody else. Now, therefore, I, Mike DeWor, Mayor of the City of Lowell, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2023 as Community Support Month in the Lowell area and encourage all citizens to join in celebrating the workers providing healthcare, emergency services, and education and public service to all the community. Motion to accept the proclamation?
I'll make that motion.
Support that.
Any other discussion on it?
Brad, Brad Roark, 640 Shepherd Drive, Lowell United Methodist Church pastor, so good evening, Mayor and Board and citizens. I'm just giving you a, just, I'm not going to take long, just a little bit of information about Community Support Month and how it began during COVID. So our church board, which is made up of citizens of Lowell, decided during that time that a lot of people were struggling. It was very difficult for frontline people. It was very difficult for service workers. And so we were thinking about how can we help our community out? And we decided just giving encouragement. So we came up with the idea to create some gift bags. They're just brown bags, little sticker on the front that says Community Support Month. We picked those support areas that you had mentioned of people who are serving in the community. And we put some chapstick, hand warmers in it for people in the bus garage, just some Kleenex and hand...
Kleenex and hand sanitizer. And had a little general prayer in there, so if people wanted to pray, that'd be great. If they don't, we could throw it away. It's not an evangelistic thing that we're looking toward, we're not looking to promote our institution in any ways, we're just trying to be more friendly and caring and supportive of our community because Lowell UNC is the community, many members are involved in it. So we had these gift bags made up, the church folk made them up, and then as they left, they could grab a bag on a Sunday and then just, if it was for medical care workers, they could just take it to their doctor. If it was for first responders, they could take it to the police, you could drop it off here and just say thanks for doing what you do. We thought it provided a lot of positive energy in the community when things were very difficult during COVID. So we decided we'd try it again. Dave and our worship leader contacted the governor of Michigan, Mayor Gretchen, and she, not mayor, she approved it as also a proclamation for the month of February. And then he also contacted the mayor, Mayor Bliss in Grand Rapids, and they approved it. Some other church communities in Grand Rapids decided that they would do that also, so now it's happening in Grand Rapids. It's a very grassroots organization. Last year, we gave out 300 bags, we also gave out, we, we had some water and some bagels and stuff that we put in the break rooms, enough for all 500 teachers at the school. And then we also reached out to the bus, bus garage and gave out 300 bags to the bus drivers just to say thank you. It is for anyone, we have the bags that we make up, but we advertise on Facebook that if you wanna join in, make up your own bag, put in what you want, you know, just provide some positive energy within our community and say thanks. So that's what's going on, I don't know what proclamations really mean, but thank you very much for doing that.
David's got cloud in Lansing?
He does, I guess. And, yeah, yeah, so, and Grand Rapids, I guess, too. So that was great. And then in the spirit of Community Support Month, I wanna encourage and thank you all for what you do and I'm sure.
I didn't hear city council.
I said, we're appreciated every day online and, yeah, paper articles. So I'm sure you get plenty to eat and criticism and I gotta have some thick skin to do the service that you do, so thank you for doing it and continuing to do it, and that's it, to all of you, so, thanks.
Brilliant, I hear you.
Yep, I hope it takes off, we wanna keep it grassroots, we don't want it to get big and organized, we just want people to do it, anybody.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Yep. Motion and a second for the proclamation, any other discussion?
House Board?
Sue?
Councilmember Salvido?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Boarding Commission reports, Cliff?
Laura, we're, we're getting closer to launching our website, we had a good meeting with the web people and there were a lot, it was kind of up in the air and we made some real good progress, so, should be seeing some good stuff there.
Excellent. Jim?
Was that the LL, Lowell Light Power Meeting? I don't know where that L P is, but former gentleman Steve Doczuk came in and spoke on behalf of the MMPA and all the good things they're doing to keep the 27 or 30 members that are part of that in the know and educating us. There was some talk about the Hart Solar Plant that, that's coming down the pipeline soon, it has been delayed, not enough in 2025, which is, could be critical for how we purchase energy, green energy down the road. There were a couple of anniversaries, Julie, I don't know, a lot of you know her in the office, that's something, 12 years, Zach, five years. And that's it on that, and then the LCTV is fast approaching deadline, February 10th, 5:00 PM, into the city council. So those who are requesting some funds, you got a little bit of time left.
Excellent. Fire Authority was last week, we approved the budget that we all looked at officially by resolution, and for the first time in the history of our fire department, we have a battalion chief, 30 commands, so Shannon promoted and we accepted Sean Donahue as the first car three battalion chief in Lowell Fire Department history, so, he's been with the department since he was a cadet, family bloodline, super dedicated, just a really good kid, so, he'll be an excellent addition to all the cool stuff they're already doing under there. Planning was canceled and so that's all I got.
So Chamber of Commerce, first of all, I want to say congratulations to the Person of the Year, if you have not have yet, it is Liz Baker, well deserved. I have only been here since 2019, so I have not had near as much time with Liz Baker as everybody else at this table, but I have learned so much from her and mostly just her compassion for community and making events a place that people are be at. So hats off to her, congrats to the new executive director taking her place on her way out, her name is Shannon Kennedy, she's hoping to come to a meeting soon to introduce herself to all of you. Parks and Rec, we appointed a new commissioner chairperson, Casey Butler, who is here this evening, congratulations. Passing off the torch is Pauline Mertendorf, who has served Parks and Rec and she has done very well and I have learned a bounty of information from her, so, good news all around.
Excellent. All right, any questions, comments on any of the budget or monthly reports?
I do wanna bring up something with the budget report, so usually around January, when I start really looking at the budget, and I look at, you know, where I start really doing deep dive to see if there's really any things I need to be concerned about, I really haven't found much really out of the norm, the biggest, I'll be honest, the biggest thing I've seen out of the, out of the norm is police overtime in our budget, we, we've racked up about $11,000 in overtime for the police department this fiscal year already, which is significantly more than we have in years past. Main reason is our time officers, we, we don't have it. And we have shifts that have to be covered, so we've been using overtime a lot more. So Chief and I are looking at trying to come to some resolution towards that. The other, the other item is, is, you know, we did talk about, a couple council meetings ago about Shepherd Drive, looking at our, our local street fund, and then obviously we're gonna be making a request, very, once the audit comes at their next meeting, it should be the next meeting, Peter will be here to present, we have, we're building up additional fund balance, I'd like to put a portion of that towards local streets. In review of those funds, I do think we'll be able to, to Shepherd, I don't think that's gonna be an issue, so we'll be able, I think we'll be able to do that for summer. At least that's all I have for the budget report.
Number for manager report?
Yep, a couple items. The first issue, I did have to issue an author, an emergency expenditure under orders 272, it was for the amount of $7,875 for work that's gonna be done tomorrow at Foreman and Hudson. So you're aware, there's a, there's a manhole cover that sunk. This manhole was not part of the Foreman project that we did two years ago, that was not, it was not in the scope, and when they did look at it at the time, there were no issues with the manhole, the, the issue has come since then. So there's no warranty or anything like that that we can recover, actually the warranty would have already expired because it's been two years since we've done that project, but this was not part of that project. So we are, we are taking care of it and should be next couple of days. Am I missing anything, Dan?
Not really, the, during that project, we did work by the manhole, up to the manhole, but we didn't replace it because it wasn't falling apart at that time. It's caving in at the top, it's all brick and our concern is a bus or semi run over it and it further fails. So we get it fixed, it's to take off the top part, replace it with a, a concrete cone section and then concrete around the surface to help hold it all together. And then basically the, the length of this is to let the concrete harden sufficiently before the buses and, and trucks drive over it. If it isn't out there already, first thing in the morning, the barricades and everything will be out there and then we're gonna close over the 8 o'clock, this contractor said he'll be here then and keep going, get down as quick as we can.
Right at school time, though?
Unfortunately. Today's set to go around the block, the detour is up to Hunt, Hudson to Hunt over to Lincoln Lake and then back down to Foreman, it's one block detour. Everybody on the street, including the schools and the businesses have been notified.
Continuing, I am working on the demolition bid for 99 North Washington, police car. We've had some, we're still working with Western Michigan to get that car, however, last week we got a line from about a possible new police vehicle we could purchase, which is within the amount we budgeted for, for the year. We may be bringing that to you at the next council meeting, the chief and I are working on that. We may not, if we, for what we have, it's in our budgeted amount, what we're getting, what we're looking at possibly, but we'll, we'll have more information at the next meeting. Cause we just got the information, the lease Friday. So USDA loan, the, the Monroe Street project, we should be getting our clearance this week to go up the bid, be a 30-day bid process, and I, I'm gonna actually inquire with USDA tomorrow. I do wanna thank Lori Gerard for her 24 years of service to the city, she did retire on Friday, and a little get together for her, it was really nice, and I know she's looking forward to return it, so that's all I have.
Okay. I have nothing under appointments or council comments.
I would like to thank the DPW. I had a hole in the back, behind my store in, I guess that'd be the light hole area, right? And it was about that big around and it went straight down. I went, well, this is pretty bizarre. DPW came out, up the barricade around it, this dig was called, I'm gonna blame Perry cause I'm sure Perry was here when that utility pole got buried, and that's what it was, it was a rotted utility pole that caused it, but it's where them old buildings used to be, it would have been right on the backside of them, so it's quite interesting to, to see how a old utility pole can make a perfectly round circle hole. So, thanks to you guys, you did a good job. Ted?
Jim?
I'm good, thank you.
I'm good too, so we'll go back to Jim.
Make the motion adjourned at 8:31.
Second for adjourned, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?